...to install sanitary sewer mains and to serve Mill Rock Road, North Oakwood Terrace, and Grove Street in order to comply with the New York State DEC Order of Consent. The total cost of this project is estimated to be $756,000.
Thank you, Katie. And Mark, are you going to say anything or are you just here to?
Well, I think we have two hearings for tonight that we advertised.
Right. Correct.
What time is the one for Mill Rock?
Immediately, that's this one.
Okay, so we advertise at 7:45?
Well, it's immediately following the first one. The second immediately follows the first.
Okay, is the one on the 2011 water tank first?
It is on the list first, but since we've already said we would have started seven to go with for timing.
Okay, so which do we start with, the water tank project?
Maybe both of them and then you would continue to.
No, do one at a time. Which one do you do first?
The New York State, the 793 P R nine dash twelve is the first one advertised.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
I'm Mark Blower. I'm a grant writer serving the village of New Paltz. I've been working on their projects since 2010. What we're having tonight are two public hearings related to ongoing or completed small cities projects. Small Cities is a nice tour that covers the HUD Community Development Block Grant Program. It's a program that provides grants to the state of New York that have competition each year to try to get a piece of that funding. For the last four years, we've been successful. We've had projects in 2010 for Huguenot Street, 2011 for water tank replacement, 2012 for the ongoing sewer project, Mill Rock, Grove, and North Oakwood. And also last year, a fourth project was funded, not yet started, in design, which is the Platical Avenue Sewer Main replacement. We're having the public hearings tonight as in response to a request from the state of New York that all the recipients of their funds have performance hearings as projects are closed out to ask the public their thoughts on completed projects. As far as that, Katie just read one of the notices that we put in the paper regarding tonight's hearing. One thing I do to keep the state satisfied is they ask us, when we report on the hearing, to provide a copy of the ad in the paper which we have. We're also asked to provide a list of who attended the hearing. So I just signed my name. I'm going to pass this around with a pen. You don't have to sign, but if you, at the very least, just pass it on. We're going to provide the state with the list of who attended the hearing. Okay, starting up from the top, what Katie described was a 2012 project funded in December of 2012 that must be completed by the end of December 2014, which is the ongoing sanitary sewer main replacement project on Mill Rock Grove, certainly the North Oakwood area. The project is a result of 2003 consent. In 2003, riverkeepers sued the village due to the problems with the sanitary sewer system whereby during heavy rain events, the sanitary sewer system was being overloaded, had the effect of manholes popping up and stuff gushing out of it. And that stuff gushing out was not shenanigans or five, it was sewage. And that sewage was impacting the river. The riverkeepers sued the village. The DEC concluded that the riverkeepers were correct. The village had to agree to a consent order. A consent order means that over a period of time, the village must redress a problem. Unfortunately, that problem developed over a hundred years because much of the sanitary sewer system dates from the 1890s, and it was not replaced over time. So all at once in 2003, the village is hit with a consent order saying, "Over a period of time, you will fix this, and if you don't continue to fix those problems, you'll be hit with a fine of $37,000 per day." So the point is, we as a village have to keep making improvements to the sanitary sewer system, taking the old parts of the system out and putting in new parts of the system to replace them. The nature of the problem is called infiltration inflow. Old sewer lines let water into the lines in two fashions: through manholes, infiltration, and inflow through the groundwater. A broken sewer pipe is like a sieve, lets water in. And in normal conditions, you don't have much infiltration inflow. When you have a thunderstorm, suddenly you have essentially millions of gallons of water falling on the area, and that has to be accommodated, either with surface flow to get down to the river, but if it gets into the sanitary sewer system, it's going to your treatment plant and overloading that plant. When a plant overloads, rasu to the river. That was the nature of the consent order. Each year, we as a village have to provide to the DEC an annual maintenance plan. The maintenance plan says we will continue to comply with the consent order with the following projects. And the village has been making progress as they go along, and wherever possible, we try to get grants. Because if the DEC wanted to be difficult in 2003, they could have said, "Fix it all within three years. We don't care what it costs." The village would have bonded with perhaps $10 million. We depend for that now. They're giving the village time to correct the problem so that when we can pick off $600,000 grants like we have been doing, it means that you're not paying that in your taxes. We're trying to use grant funds wherever possible to do something each and every year. That is the basis for the Huguenot Street project that was funded in 2010. It's a basis for the 2012 Mill Rock project that's going on now. It's a basis for the Platical Avenue sewer project that's funded in design. It's also the basis for another sewer project that's pending right now. We hope to get an answer within two weeks. We have to keep making progress or we're going to be hit with fines or the village will have to bond and make improvements with your money. So the point of tonight's hearings is to give you the background and to tell you where we stand with this project. The current project on Mill Rock and Grove and North Oakwood is about 75% complete. We expect to have the remaining mains in place by the end of this month. Early December, we're going to have what are called the laterals. The laterals go from the sewer main to the property line, where people can connect to those. And then the project's essentially done. The total project is around, I think, $660,000, $670,000, of which $600,000 came as a grant from the state. The balance is being paid by the village. We had two years to complete it, and we're just going to make it in time. We had a significant delay earlier this year because the DEC simply would not give us a simple permit to replace sewer mains. They took many, many months to give us permit, and in reality, it's taken us about 10 weeks to get the project done. The permitting process was much longer than the construction. As a stance now, Merritt Construction is doing a fine job. I've been talking both Merritt and to our inspector, Brina R. Arias, and I think we'll be finished by mid-December with everything, at which point we'll have all the grant money drawn, and we'll be that much further along to keeping the DEC satisfied that we're complying with the consent order. And then next year, we're looking at the Platical Avenue project, and then beyond that, hopefully, the pending project will be approved as well. But again, the point here is that we're trying to comply with the consent order using grants and not your tax dollar money. The daunting prospect is that we're trying to undo 100 years of neglect in a relatively short period. So that between, say, 1890 and 1990, there wasn't a lot of sewer main replacement going on. Right now, we're trying to pack a lot of remedial work into a relatively short period of time. So again, my name's Mark Blower. I would ask that if you have any questions or comment about this project, to address them to the village board. I'll try to answer where possible. To make it easy for Katie, who's keeping the minutes, please identify who you are. Thank you.
Anyone here to speak to this? Don?
Just a question. I did watch on how to access the information with residents about this project. At that time, some residents were a lot more towards building up. Has there been any progress in what you said?
There's been progress. We're still looking into, we're still looking into our options. We have found out that we can use the village's revolving loan fund to offer basically half a percent interest loans over a five-year period as one option. And we're looking into what our other options are, and hopefully, we'll have some definitive answers what we can and can't do in the next couple of weeks.
I was wondering if someone has.
The lawyers are looking into.
Find a way to help these people.
Yeah, the lawyers are looking into seeing what they can do.
Jason, I can throw one thing in about a type of loan that's sometimes offered with some programs. The word loan associated, it's called a deferred loan. And I use it sometimes with home rehabilitation programs for loan from homeowners. The deferred loan is a loan that has no interest and only is paid back when you sell your house. But it's still a loan. It effectively allows people to use money interest-free until they decide to leave. Something to consider, it might get around the whole issue of loan versus grant. Because my understanding is that villages can't typically offer grants to people. But if it's a loan, you can make the terms so convenient.
That's what we're trying to do, Mark, with the revolving loan fund.
So, but what I'm saying is, a deferred loan, when I'm offering a fix on somebody's roof somewhere, it means that they pay it back in full when they sell their house with no interest in meantime. Just saying, be imaginative.
Did you get?
I did, right.
Be imaginative. I'm not an attorney, but they can tell you what you can and cannot do. But deferred loans I use in certain circumstances where you want to be alone, but you don't pay it back until you move out.
Well, actually, we would prefer to find grant money that would pay rather than have to lend.
But our attorneys are looking into those options, and they're advising us about.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I'm going to move to close the public hearing. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And open the segment.
New York State Office of Community Renewal, Community Development Block Grant, CDVG Program Funds Project 793 P W seven-two-dash-eleven. The village of New Paltz has completed a New York State Office of Community Renewal Small Cities Community Development Block Grant, CDVG project. And New York State CDVG project 793 P W seven-two-dash-eleven, in the amount of $600,000, was used to replace one of the village's two water tank, storage tanks. The total cost of the project was $1.6 million. A public hearing is being held in order to review the performance and the status of the activities to the identifiable future community development activities for the Small Cities CDVG program. The second hearing is in addition to the public hearing that was held during the development of this project prior to the submission of the Small Cities CDVG application.
All right, I'm going to hear this from Mark.
Yeah, I wrote real mountains. Does anybody know where the village's water tanks are? Well, trust me, you have them. That's why you have pressure, that's why you have fire going here. We have two, we have two water tanks. One is a 2 million gallon welded steel tank that was 45 years old. It wasn't a danger of collapsing, but if you saw the photographs from inside, it was getting a bit questionable whether or not it had many more to block the years like that. The other tank is a 1.5 million gallon pre-stressed concrete tank. In short, we needed to replace the tank on our terms versus replacing it on an emergency basis. When something fails inside, you have to quickly replace it. We went to the state, asked for $600,000 to defray the cost of that replacement of that water tank. The total cost was about $1.6 million. We were trying to get as much grant money as we could. We got $600,000 from the State Office of Community Renewal, the same program that's funding the Mill Rock project. In 2013, we did and rebuilt the new tank. We took down the old one, built a new one on the same foundation. The new one is 1.5 million gallon, again, pre-stressed concrete. We completed the construction in November. We did the other odds and ends around the tank over the winter. We put the new tank in service approximately in February. And if you have not noticed any difference in water quality, we succeeded. We took the old tank out, put the new tank in, and in essence, the argument, what that we gave to the state was that if that tank ever fails, there could be a lot of people downstream suddenly inundated with 2 million gallons of water. And rather than ever have a situation where some health agency tells us to replace it on a hurry-up basis, we replaced it on our own terms, which is without being pressured to do it. That's the advantage of not having a consent order. You can choose to do things on your own timeframe. So that water tank has been replaced, new one's in place. Most people don't know where the tanks are. Simply stated, I usually go up to the dumping dump and turn right and can go through the development, and eventually you'll find the water tanks back there. Any questions or comments about this completed project?
No, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your brief summaries of long, complicated projects. Mark.
Thank you.
Would you all please rise for the attention please?
A pleasure, one to listen to the Latin States of America, and two great pilots for which stands one nation under God, and it is the love of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a couple of additions to the agenda tonight. One is a request from the Greater New Paltz Community Partnership for, well, they're going to have a first night this year, including such things as a bonfire in Hasbrook Park. At least that's what they're requesting, so I'll add that to the agenda. We have requests regarding the pickleball courts. And I thought I saw the third one.
Trusty Rose has requested that we discuss the letter we received from the officer Russo Deli that you have in the process.
Oh, and may we have a discussion on when we're having our December meeting.
So Russo Deli.
Because of Christmas Eve.
And meetings.
Yep.
Anything else?
I want to acknowledge the receipt of Deb Russo's letter on parking.
Well, that's an agenda item.
No, it isn't.
No, no, I have it on my list to add.
Oh, you have?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry. And you've got pickleball?
The pickleball, the New Year's Eve, Russo Deli, and meetings.
And Julie Robbins made a proposal, Ariana and myself, about stickers that we are a bank-free community. Could we talk about that for a minute?
Stickers, okay.
And stickers?
Yeah. I'll move to amend the agenda as stated.
Seconds, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public comment, would you like to go first? No one? Yes, Don?
Just a quick question. I sent a letter to you and all the members of the board, mailed it on Saturday, requesting that Plains Road community be made part of next week's agenda, and I was wondering if you reached a decision on that?
So far, unless I'm overruled by the board, it's my decision, and I would not be adding it to the agenda, given the fact of multiple lawsuits and the fact that it's just not the right platform. We generally don't have community groups coming to use a village board meeting as a platform or a jumping-off point. That said, public comment is open to whatever you'd like to say, so you're welcome to come to public comment and say your piece, but adding it to the agenda itself is not something that we've done in advance. But I can be overruled by the board, that's my.
To determine whether there is a meeting next week.
But we haven't even decided if there is a meeting next week.
Actually, you did motion to have a meeting in October, so you can change your mind, you can certainly overrule, but you did actually a motion to have a meeting next week.
It wasn't in my calendar.
Let's not talk about the meetings right now, because Donna asked a very specific question.
Good point.
If, does anyone disagree with what I have to say? Public comment is the appropriate place for those statements?
I think our attorneys would concur with what you had said.
Because of the lawsuits, it makes things trickier, yes. So please come to public comment, but adding it to the agenda is, would be breaking a precedent.
But if I'm understanding correctly now, you're not sure if there's actually going to be a meeting next week?
We changed up the meetings to the holidays, and we might have just made some mistakes, so we're going to talk about what, when we're meeting.
When we have our meeting date discussion.
Yeah, it's an agenda item to talk about when we're meeting next, so.
As I said, we're confused.
Okay.
Anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir.
My name is Vincent Ariano, I live in Chong W, New Paltz. I understand we have a sister city in Japan, and that thought kind of inspired me to, as you have your search for order, that I have this haiku I would like to briefly present to you.
Sure, that'd be great.
That's awesome.
People thirst. Simplest answer, always best. Our river flows endless. Thank you.
Might we have a coffee?
You know, every once in a while, we talk about having a village poet laureate, and maybe we should bring that up.
I was thinking. Exactly.
That'd be good. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. We need more of that at village board meetings.
That's why.
We do stand that everybody gets.
Yes, of course.
You get the coffee.
All right, anyone else for public comment?
You don't have to stand over there. Okay, I'm going to sit down. My name is Alex. I'm a student at New Paltz, and I'm also an intern at NIFER, New York Public Interest Research Group. And I'm a project leader for the environmental protection campaign, and one of our primary goals is to keep fracking out of New York State because of all the bad things that come with it, as you guys know. And our village actually passed the municipal ban on fracking within the village. And I think the idea of converting buildings to natural gas is very hypocritical of us, and especially since it's probably from other states where it's been cracked. We need to uphold our village statement that we will not stand for fracking. And the potential conversion would not be environmentally responsible or economically responsible. Methane is more potent than global warming agent than carbon dioxide in the short term, and it's released during every stage of gas extraction, transportation, and use. It's also a short-term fossil fuel resource, and we shouldn't be wasting money on infrastructure to support that. Municipalities across the country look up to the village of New Paltz, and our progressive policies on marriage equality and banning fracking, let's continue that trend in investing clean, green renewable energy technologies like wind and solar power. The village of New Paltz should not facilitate and support natural gas production and should not entertain the idea of converting buildings to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
Well, hi. My name is Lani Kukalan. I'm a resident of the village of New Paltz, and I pay close attention to local and statewide politics, especially in terms of environmental issues, and I'm a voter. The most pressing issue facing society today is environmental degradation. The biggest threat to our environment faces, that our environment faces today is irresponsible natural gas production. In February of this year, Rex Tillerson, CEO of ExxonMobil, and a man who probably benefits financially the most in natural gas in the country, joined a lawsuit against his hometown to prevent hydrofracking from coming to his backyard. This is a classic case of NIMBYism. NIMBY standing for not in my backyard, but being okay with causing harm to other people's backyards. New Paltz has banned hydrofracking in our town, in Ulster County, that is home to many voters who are actively against hydrofracking coming to New York State. If you push to convert natural gas, you will be committing, committing the hypocritical action of NIMBYism. You will be sending a personal slap in the face to your residents, your environment, future board members, and to the people of Pennsylvania, whose air, water quality, and health have been compromised due to natural gas production. Sorry. We need to find alternative solutions to provide our energy, like wind and solar power. By not investing in natural gas infrastructure, you will be making a statement to our community and for surrounding communities that look up to us.
Thank you. Who else? No one?
I guess I'll go.
Just get it over with. You know you're going to go eventually.
So my name is Megan Spoff, and I'm here as a resident of the village of New Paltz. I'm here, I've been living here for a few years now, and I'm also a voter. I just want to bring up about the economics of switching over to natural gas for the village of New Paltz. So natural gas, as you guys all know, is a finite natural resource, and with all finite resources, the price goes up as we reach the end. So New Paltz has banned hydrofracking in our municipality, and I'm just going to make the assumption that you guys would like to see that expanded to all New York State. If this in fact does go through and Governor Cuomo bans fracking in New York State, the prices of natural gas will skyrocket overnight if they're not looking to have New York added to their artillery of natural gas. So as we were saying before, there's multiple places it can escape, so increasing passageways and pipelines from Pennsylvania will only decrease the amount that will come here. And basically, it will just continue to increase in price as our infrastructure fails, just like our waterways. And basically, we need to look at natural gas and green energy will always stay the same price, and we need to look at that as a more infinite resource that will not increase in price over time.
Thank you. Who else? I assume.
My name is Stuart Allen. I'm also a resident in the village. Just like reiterate what David's saying. I'm with New Paltz because it's a great community and we've got a really robust economy based on local business, but we shouldn't be relying on our energy sources from these gigantic corporations that are really just like the most evil on the planet. I've been to Dibbit, Pennsylvania, seen firsthand like the devastation that fracking has on the community. Neighbors like turn against neighbors, they're all sick, and the economy is just ruined. So if we're going to use energy that comes from that sort of enterprise, I don't think I can really support or like continue living in Paltz if that's where we stand on that kind of issue, so I would just like to see us not convert to natural gas.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Richard Dela. I'm also a student at New Paltz. They help inspire people, but so just on that note, the term of economic ease of money, in the event of the natural gas market bottoming out, which is probably what's going to happen going by the fact that it's a massive retaliation against fracking, the infrastructure will be transitioned over to support the natural gas. And if the black market goes out of a bubble, it's going to be put in there, the money's going to be wasted on it, and the option of it in the long term is going to be unfeasible. And it's going to be a lot of money down the drain for possibly a lot of damage to the area in the same sense of the sewer mains damaged over a period of time, becomes unfeasible to service these mains after they're no longer being used. It could lead to one shit of all.
Thank you. Yes?
I don't know if people have discussed doing an audit, an energy audit for the building, for the village building.
We did one years ago, and we're talking about doing another.
My understanding is that that was not a robust audit, and that it would be too need to, to support doing a really thorough and audit of the energy system here and to innovate the use of natural gas.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Don?
I misunderstood communication Saturday that the DEC would not have any added to the agenda, and I may have misinformed Commissioner Joanna Weiss that the lead versus the streetlight issue was not on the agenda.
It was, it wasn't the agenda tonight, though I did get a message she's not able to make it, just stuck at work. I forgot to mention that earlier.
It was my fault.
Thank you.
I take it late. And I would just comment on this way with regard to the discussions with Central Hudson. And I'll leave very politely, I don't wish. During the public meeting that I was at most recently, the Central Hudson representative made a very unfortunate misrepresentation in response to direct questions from Trusty Rose in terms of whether their project could be viable without including the village of DPW. We now have information online that says exactly the opposite. Central Hudson feels that their project could be viable without the village of DPW. I think the crash in oil prices since this whole discussion has started has removed some of the economic argument in favor of natural gas. And I, as we have analyzed the cost-saving projections from Central Hudson, they have also been some unfortunate misrepresentations. So it's, the Environmental Policy Commission is doing our yardage to do research and to bring you data, to bring you the information that will take more time than you all would have to spend on this issue with all the responsibility we have. So we're really looking at this. We're looking at, we're looking at the possibilities of what can be done with a combination of solar and energy removal. We're looking at that possibility of sealing up these buildings better. We're looking at all the options. We will bring whatever we keep on to you. But I just, I think it's very disconcerting that there were these misrepresentations, and you've been yielding the data and assurances that have not necessarily held up over time. We'll continue this over future meetings, I'm sure.
Jason, I did want to say to Donna, because his commission has taken on the request we made. If in fact, Donna, we move our meeting in December, up a week, then that's unfair to your committee, and I would suggest that we then get Donna's report, the first meeting in January. And since Central Hudson's deal is all. And since Central Hudson's deal is off the table anyway, is that good for you? That gives you a little extra time.
We plan to be ready for December, but it's gonna rush, so...
Oh, you booked it?
We haven't planned it, we're gonna be on the 20th of November.
Okay.
And the plan was to...
Well, then... But if you can't or get pinched, know that we're gonna try and move the meeting a week ahead in December. And that would give you, if you need, till January.
Excellent, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Any other public comment? Alright. Then I...
I have an announcement.
Okay, what's your announcement?
As the board knows, but the community may not know, our employees who are represented by the CSEA have been without a contract, and negotiations have gone on for quite a while. But on behalf of the negotiating team for the village, Ariana and myself, I am pleased to announce that the CSEA has ratified the contract, and we are waiting for it to be rendered to contract language. This board has already ratified it, but before it could get into wording, our employees had to ratify it, and they have done so. And so, I think I can say on behalf of Ariana and myself, we are pleased. Oh, definitely.
I actually would like to say that the board congratulates our colleagues on successfully negotiating a labor contract, which any of you who have done so in the past may know is not necessarily an overnight or easy task.
Thank you.
So, I congratulate you on what you've done for the village.
Okay, any other announcements?
Took a long time. Actually, yeah, on Sunday, there is here, at I believe 2:00 PM, Climate Action Coalition is doing a Be Wise Winterize event. And they are going to have demos, and you can sign up for a free energy audit for your home, which is something that NYSERDA provides. Anyway, if you are not familiar with NYSERDA's program, this is a great way to get familiar, so come. I think it's in this room, so this room, this Sunday.
The poster is on the window outside.
Yeah. So, please, please definitely come and check out how you can winterize your home.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Well, let's...
A second?
Sorry.
Oh, you haven't had that.
All in favor, aye? Aye. What I was gonna say is I want to find out who's here for something specific so we can get them home.
Yep.
Besides Ian and Bren, is there anyone here for a specific agenda item? Yes, Tom?
I'm here for the Greater New Paltz Community Party Request for the Bonfire.
Great.
Oh, cool.
Okay, so let's go Ian, and then the, well, no, the park is probably faster. It doesn't matter. Let's do the park first, the park you should press.
I'll move it.
I have just a second.
I was gonna say...
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I will say that I spoke to the police, the fire chief today, who said that he anticipates having a team available, but you may potentially want to move it with the caveat that the fire department is also in cooperation with that. The police department's in cooperation, the DPW is in cooperation. We're just waiting to hear that we would have firefighters here in case for...
Because we do at the... Is there any consideration of combining the two? That the village does, Jason, with... Most people will still have their trees up, but...
Yeah, well, we can both.
You wanna do them separate?
Sure.
Okay.
Doesn't matter. Two bonfires on dead of winter is...
I'm bringing my marshmallows.
Alright, so do we want to make a condition on the fire department's attendance?
I think we have to, though.
We don't legally have to.
But for insurance purposes, we not practically have to.
It's not a bad idea.
It's certainly not a bad idea.
We did that to you for last year's bonfire, so I think Tom's right.
You know, this has been something that any bonfire...
Alright, so you're gonna make, amend your motion?
He amended, I'll second. I'll amend it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
You got your approval, thank you.
Very good, thank you very much.
We just gotta go through the magic words and all the rituals.
Just as an aside, we've already been in touch with Chief of Lawyer, and he's already planning to be at the bonfire.
Oh, good.
Good show.
And you are?
I am Roman James, I'm the priest at St. Andrews in this...
Well, welcome to you.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Alright. Mr. Weinstein has had sewage in his basement, and it was in our village main. Sally, you were gonna make a motion to this...
I am going to move that the village assume the responsibility of directing the problem and all the information that Mr. Weinstein can provide to our insurance carrier. And depending upon what they say, of course, that the village assume the fiscal responsibility for this. Some of it may be recoverable from our insurance, and it may not be. But in either case, I think it was our problem, and we have to solve it for you.
So, I'll second that.
Just point of clarification, though. Then you're not suggesting that the remediation is contingent on the insurance decision, just that that must take place.
That must take place first.
The request has to take place in advance of a, of our paying for remediation.
Right.
Is that okay?
Is that...
Any other, yeah, that's...
Any problem?
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, we'll be taking care of it.
What do I do?
Call, call Katie tomorrow, she'll...
Yeah.
Get you what you need.
Basically, all the information that you can provide needs to go to the clerk, who will provide it to the treasurer, who will review it with our insurance carrier, and we'll go from there.
Alright.
Thank you.
So, she's white, you've got two things.
She's not here.
Yeah, she's sitting right there.
Oh, she got here. Oh, Bren is here. I thought we, we're gonna do Bren next, okay.
Yeah, that was, that's the only, that's the only thing that we were here for.
We got it, yeah.
Alright, let's, let's talk about CBS first, because I think that's a faster one. And get that out of the way. Does, I would like to move that we forward this on to the town. Is it the planning board or the ZBA?
Both.
Is it planning board? I would say both, because I mean zoning board is meeting tonight.
Alright, so I'll move that we forward on Bren's memo to the ZBA and town ZBA and town planning board with a cut letter that this is the position of the village board.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
While Bren is here, I'd like to publicly congratulate her on being, the village being the recipient of a $200,000 sidewalk grant. And I congratulate you.
Very good.
Thank you.
And now, we want you...
You've already kind of backed your salary for the year.
I know, I was gonna ask.
Jason. Jason.
Good timing.
At our last meeting, I gave you a name of a grant that might cover our sidewalks, and you took this little paper.
Where did I put that slip?
I don't know, but it needs to go to Bren.
Alright, I'll look in my office.
Because if she can get that for us on sidewalks, maybe she can cover the other.
That's true. Alright, well, I'll look in my office for that after the meeting.
Okay.
For now, let's jump back to item number 10. Bren has written us a memo proposing code change regarding construction of sidewalks. Anything you wanted to say about this, or is it pretty straightforward and simple?
Pretty straightforward.
So, I will move to call for a hearing.
Well, has Will seen the language?
No, I haven't.
No.
Should we...
Should we have a hearing pending, pending the attorney review?
Well, and I'm gonna ask for hearing on the handbook. So, if it's all possible, that would be December 10th?
As it stands now, I think it's December 8th.
December 10th is when the handbook hearing, I believe, is recommended.
The 10th would be the meeting, yeah, so that's the second one.
I will say that Will, that the whole packet, including Bren's information, was sent to Will on Friday, so he has access.
So, is it possible, do you think, that December 10th could be your hearing also?
Yeah, I have no problem with that, I'll send it to Will for it.
Okay.
Alright, so you're gonna, you move to set the public hearing? Anyone second?
December 10th.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
Let me, let's see.
So, is any, I guess not.
And that's it, no one else is here for anything to do with it? Tom?
I'm here for the special, yeah, we're gonna need...
Oh, so thank you.
Then we just go...
We'll talk about the meetings. No, alright, so what do we, remind us, Katie, what do we have in November, or seven, seven?
As of right now, you have another meeting scheduled for next week.
Which is what date?
The 19th. And that was scheduled before we had our special meeting on the 5th.
Right.
So, and you can overturn, I mean, you can overturn whatever you'd like.
But that's the only other meeting this month?
Right. And in December, we only have the town scheduled.
What about the joint meeting with the town about the planner interviews?
Well, that would be that Susan and Jean Glouche are the only two people who've responded to me at all.
Okay, well, schedule just then.
Okay, I will have, well, Jean can't be here, but...
Well, then, it doesn't matter.
That is also the date of the meeting with President Christiansen?
Christian.
Christian, that's the 18th.
The 18th.
Yeah, but that's early.
Okay.
That meeting's early.
Okay.
So...
I will forward the option.
But there is no joint board meeting at the moment for the 18th, because we've had no response from the town.
Right.
So, but the 19th, nobody remembered...
It's on the calendar that the ZBA meeting is on, right?
Nobody remembered that it had been, I don't think we officially acted on it, Katie.
Well, if we did, it's a moot point, we can change it now. So, do we want to meet just twice between now and the year? Now and January?
I think we ought to meet next week, because I think there is enough stuff.
I, I'm opposed to that, since I will not be here.
Okay.
Next week you will not be here?
I will not be here next week.
Do you want to consider meeting just for the sake of payables? The sake of payables?
Bills and claims, you mean?
I don't think that...
I'm open, I did, I did put something else in my calendar, but I would be here instead if we have neither.
So, I'll move that we cancel, since we've had two meetings in November already. I'll just...
Is there anything that we need to do?
You have nothing on water, do you?
Well, you know, we have the meeting with DDP coming up, but there's not a meeting scheduled for the board.
Do you think you might need to schedule?
I think December 12th.
After we have the meeting with DDP, then I think we would request an agenda item after that, but we could do that by December 10th.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Let's not...
Okay, so you...
So, you, you moved to...
And the 10th is okay for us?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm moving to remove the 19th as a, as a meeting.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now for December, we have the same problem.
Yeah, the second meeting would be on Christmas Eve.
And I'll move that we meet the second, third Wednesdays of the month in December.
I'll second that as well.
Okay.
The 10th and 17th.
So, that's the 10th and the 17th.
Yep.
All in favor?
Oh.
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, are you seeing up?
I can't meet on the 17th, but that doesn't mean that you guys should not.
Oh, we'll miss you.
I will miss you as well.
Oh, good.
For the sake of...
I do want to say that if we need a special meeting as a result of the DDP meeting, that the mayor should feel free to call in.
And I just wanted to confirm that if we do go forward with the joint meeting with the town, that you could do, that bills and claims could be done at that meeting. Is that okay?
Yep.
But I do not think that meeting is gonna go forward, because they have not notified us.
Could we, could we meet on the 3rd and the 10th? Could we meet on the 3rd and the 10th instead of the 10th and the 17th?
That'd be fine, I'm, I'm open.
The 3rd of December?
She's asking can we meet on the...
The first and second Wednesday instead of the 2nd and 3rd Wednesday.
Wednesday and the 2nd, that's fine.
I don't have anything on the 3rd.
Yeah?
We prohibit it.
Okay, can I, I will move that instead then.
Okay, I'll second that, all in favor?
Thank you.
Aye.
So, it's the 3rd and the 10th?
You have to vote.
I'll just send you an application to the paper, copy the board.
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, are we set now?
I think so.
I believe we know who we're meeting.
No meeting next week. I'll send it forward to the town to the board.
Okay. Now where are we going?
Back, we'll just go from the top. Discussion of the housing standards.
Okay, now.
So, I had sent out, I had taken Sally's comments and put them into a Word document. You all got that?
Now we have that, yeah.
Now we have that.
Okay, the only thing I wasn't sure about was...
The last thing?
Well, no, well, no, because I figured that out later.
Oh, okay.
You sent the clarification.
Yeah.
The only thing was Tom had suggested, this is Tom's only suggestion, that...
That we include force majeure or some...
Yeah, but where do you want included? That's what I wasn't sure.
Well, I have included here, I'm trying to, I'm trying to find it. It would be under displaced tenant.
I, E, 129 dash...
Temporary housing.
What is it?
A E 1. I just, I don't, it's not the way you should say that, I don't know how to phrase it.
Why don't you say what you said, acts of God? Unrelated to acts of God.
Yeah.
That's the, what force majeure means.
Then why don't we use force majeure?
Then you may use force majeure.
So, just leave it as is.
Okay.
That's what I would do.
It sounds fine.
I would avoid using any references to supernatural events.
Yeah. Basically.
Alright, so, but I, you know, I don't have any problem with any of these revisions to the law.
Then I'm going to move the adoption unless we have to have another hearing.
You don't.
This has been on the table too long. Ariana, did you have any?
Ariana, I think you said in the message that you were okay with Sally's amendment.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so as amended?
Your edits were fine.
As amended.
As amended.
So, I'll second that then.
Awesome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm so happy.
Astonishing. Astonishing.
A year and a half, I'm so happy that that passed.
The only question I have...
This is my second favorite thing that I've been involved in the village this term, after the stream. after the stream.
Well, the stream, we didn't have the discord we had on this one.
It's true, yeah.
Um, Katie?
Yes.
There's nobody here, were the changes put on the website?
The packet, the 129, the.
Yeah, but that's the old, you had the wrong housing standards law in.
Everything that was on the packet is on the website.
That didn't answer the question, so you said.
This was new, was, to me, new information this evening. So this couldn't be on the website because it was new.
So, Jason, do you think we ought to wait and?
Oh, I think we've heard.
I think we answered all concerns.
We've heard every concern you can possibly hear, and we answered them in writing, and we answered them verbally.
I would suggest that we just make a special point of publishing on the website in a prominent place, the law has amended.
That's a good idea.
The law that was passed.
Yeah.
With my.
And then say you have.
With my.
I have the perfect one.
You have this in Word?
I, I have this in this, this is what I have.
All right, I'll send you this in Word.
Perfect.
So it adds all the.
And as of tomorrow, it should be.
That was a joke.
Okay?
Pay a star.
You can take mine.
You have, I can give her mine if you don't have.
Oh, I'm good.
You have one?
That's the one that has all your, your changes tagged.
All right.
Wow, let's move.
Yeah.
Thank you, Board, for letting us finally get this done and putting it to bed.
Yes.
I think it is.
Took us a while.
Good.
Only two and a half years.
That's a good one.
Next.
Yeah.
All right, proposal on energy audits.
All right, um, so I don't know if everybody has looked through this a second time, um, but I, I mean, I looked at like the costs versus, a lot of it is pretty boilerplate in terms of the process, um, but I thought maybe we could go through the same thing of narrowing it down, and do we want to do interviews? Sounds good.
I agree with what Orrell said. We, when we last talked about this, we said we wouldn't consider until those things that were supposed to be implemented have been implemented, okay? They are, what is the timeframe, Jason, do you know, for Blue getting the rest of the?
I don't know if they're talking about.
Well, I would, I would like to suggest he be hurried to get them done. The other concern I have, Ariana, is that every one of those proposals for the energy audit, and there were six of them.
Uh-huh.
Okay, along with the 2006 audit, all recommended converting to natural gas. If you don't want that.
I know.
Which is the point of, if you're asking for it, I would suggest.
Well, well, some of them.
That we wait.
I don't know.
That we wait until Don Kerr and his committee.
Copy that, okay.
Tell us what they have discovered and what they would recommend as a potential alternative. Because I'm really not interested in an energy, paying for an energy audit is going to tell us what a lot of people have said they don't want, and that is natural gas. So, there's no point at the moment.
Well, so, so what I, what I'm going to say is that some of them, some of them were clearly recommending, some of them, I, I think were saying more like, this is, these are paths that many municipalities have taken, um, where it's just saying that these are like common things that people do. Um, so they might not necessarily recommend that to us, but I do agree, obviously, because I do not want to go convert to natural gas.
Oh, good.
Um, but, but I do think that it is important for us to do an energy audit, although I am willing to wait, obviously, till the first, since we've waited this long already, till the first meeting in December to see what.
Is it possible, and I don't know whether Don's not here, so I have to pick, a member of the community, but, for them to come up with a better list of things to be audited than what the old energy audit did and what most of these proposals are doing, which are basically the same thing? Are there more things we should be looking at?
Well, all of our other buildings for one.
Hmm?
All of our other buildings. The sewer plant, the water plant.
None of them have had.
I don't believe, I think it was just this complex that.
I think it was just the, but Jason, that's not what I mean. Um, we did the lighting, we did, we're finishing the windows, but there, does NYSERDA?
Those windows are part of it, too.
Could we apply the NYSERDA list? Just for example, because I don't know, um, to the things that we expect them to give us a recommendation on. Come up with a list.
Can we ask for, is what would you be able to get a copy of the two year old audit that we're all?
Pardon?
This audit, your little.
Oh, yeah.
Right, would we be able to get a copy?
I can send that to you right now.
Yeah, the clerk can.
No. And, uh, everything may not be relevant anymore, but.
Well, first of all.
It isn't.
You have to take off the things that we have done.
Correct.
Okay, we don't want to do an energy audit on things that have already been implemented based on the old one, but aren't there other criteria, other than just saying we'd love to have an energy audit? Are there specific things that we can list that we want to know about? That would winterize us better? Do you understand what I mean, speaking, Ariana?
I understand, I, we just had an energy audit, though.
Okay.
So, there is in fact a list.
At your home?
Yeah, at your home. There is in fact a list from NYSERDA on the items that would be examined. Anything that has been done, they will know instantly upon looking at your house that they have been done. So if you have the appropriate lighting in, they're not going to spend time on lighting. If you've got insulation, et cetera. So they will check, but they'll check in two seconds and know, if, if you have, uh, you know, like low, uh, flush toilets, they're going to know that in one second, they're not going to spend any time.
They never even looked at toilets.
Well, well, that's the thing, is that there, I think that.
They will.
I think the energy audits we are looking at now, while they are boilerplate in some ways and similar to what we all have already have done, I think that there are additional things that were not looked at the first time.
And, and you can negotiate that with them.
Could we do an amend, to the six that proposed?
Yeah.
Could we send them an amended list? These are the specific things we want to know, and are you still interested in bidding on it? Could we do that?
I, I mean, I don't see why not, but, but, I mean, the, I'd say the, the energy audits are pretty standard, they're all, all with NYSERDA, because NYSERDA will pay for half of it.
Well, I don't think the 2006 was paid half by NYSERDA, was it, Jason?
I, I don't know if that was, but.
It was eight years ago, I don't know.
Yeah, but, but all the ones that we got, they're all flex pack, which I got through Pat Courtney, Strong.
That is nicer.
And she, and she was the one who gave us all these things, and the whole point is that NYSERDA will pay for half of it. So, you know, the, the most expensive one at 20,000 is still 10 for us.
So, do you want?
So we're going to talk about this in December?
Well, okay. Well, no, because what I want to recommend is that Ariana, meet.
E P C, yep.
And come up with, look at the, all of the proposals we got, given your understanding.
Do you think that you and the E P C would want to look at, look at it and give us a recommendation on what your thoughts are?
I'd love to see the energy audit this April.
I, I mean, the proposals.
Some of the things that are recommended are outdated at this point, but that's kind of like a look at and go through and see.
We have six proposals to do a new energy audit, and that's what I'm, that's what we're discussing right now, is, is whether or not you would like to look at those and see who you think would be good.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So let's put that off to December, till we find out what, is that satisfactory to you, Ariana?
Um, yeah, I'm happy to have the E P C involved, especially since you guys are spearheading our renewal book.
No, no, no. You understand what I'm looking for.
I do.
Okay.
Yes.
As opposed to just.
It's not.
High in the sky, you know, we need to look at the whole thing in light of what we have, and also in, in light of, whatever. I'm not interested in doing this if those six proposals, which all six of them did, represented natural gas, then that is self-defeating, and it defeats what you're trying to achieve.
It, it does, I know, that's why I was disappointed when we understood that to begin with.
Well, it suggests something to me, however, that there may be collective wisdom out there.
It suggests to me that there might be collective funding out there.
But no, my point is, if the whole purpose and the thrust of the six proposals are that the most energy efficient thing you can do is convert to natural gas.
They have by no means said that.
Well.
There was no indication that that is the most energy efficient way to go.
They recommended it.
It, it was said that this is what many, like, many municipalities.
We're talking about this in December, remember?
Yeah, but Jason, we might as well get the gas part of this straightened out once and for all, because the whole point is when.
And we're wait, no, we're waiting for the E P C to straighten the gas thing out once and for all.
Yeah, because the energy.
So we're waiting December.
The point of the energy audit is not to be against natural gas, it's to make us as, as efficient as we can with reducing our energy needs versus reducing our energy costs.
It is not, okay, so just so we're all clear on this.
I, we, yeah, we all know I'm anti-natural gas, but the energy, the purpose of the energy audit is to see how we can reduce our energy needs before we look at reduce our, reducing our energy costs.
Which we will all discuss in December.
Which, as I understood, that proposed, all the proposals, that they are equivalent.
We're, we're, let's just move on.
Let's move on.
I'll send it to you.
Employee handbook. I only have three comments, and thank you for pulling this together, though it was hard to, I, I don't know what's new and what's not, Sally.
Okay.
But I have, I have three, only three comments on the whole thing, if you want to hear them.
Here is.
Most of this is, most of this is existed, yeah.
A lot of this existed, and it existed in code, and it really doesn't belong in the latest code. Um, this is what it's going to look like when it's all done.
Very nice.
So the first one is the employee handbook, and then the second is the policy book, those are the board policies that we have adopted, and that's where Will is right now reviewing these, but he, we got him so caught up with Water, Jason, that, and then this is the emergency, prepare this plan for the Village of New Balls, this is the joint one.
We think we only have a joint one, we don't have a separate one.
No, we found the separate one.
Oh, did you?
And then either the current C S E A contract, or if we get it done.
Right.
Okay.
So things like the village board policies that we adopted would be in chapter two, the policy.
Yeah, which, we were hoping that the whole thing could come to the board, but Will has not been able to review, um, that part yet. But all of this has been reviewed by Will, and everything, the problem is, or what, one of the things we discovered is that we've gotten into the habit of, I don't, we've just gotten into the habit of adopt, or putting into practice, um, certain employee benefits, um, that are in the union contract, we've never updated the code to reflect those changes. So all of these things, like, in the employee handbook, some of the things are policies we've adopted, like the Code of Ethics.
Right.
Okay, um, and then Will reviewed and straightened out the disclosure statement that goes with the Code of Ethics, because there is no formal disclosure form on record when we adopted the policy. We were never given the disclosure form. I sent to him all that I could find from the meeting where we adopted it, so he has recommended those things, our policies on, you know, harassment, all of these, because I know this would be a concern if, if I were sitting here, these have been reviewed by the people who are involved, and so everybody is happy with, there are some changes, like in the longevity chart, everybody's involved.
Any objections, no objections to the longevity changes?
No.
Okay.
Okay, and we had some compromises and, you know, okay, that we, you know, it implements the policy that we adopted in terms of part-time, regular employees who are with us, um, and so all the, the drug testing procedures, the whole point of this is so that an employee or a board member or anybody involved in the village can just take, it'll be in a white binder, you are going to have to sign that you have received it, so there's no question, you can't say, gee, I didn't know, and this is just going to really be a quick way, even for us, if, say, a question came up, do we have a policy gone? Um, just look it up in, you know, it's all at your white book. You and I had talked about an organizational chart, um, and I took some of our, um, from two years ago discussion, and I put it into, and Ryan, our assistant clerk, is the one who knew how to make this on the computer, and I think you did a fabulous job. So all of our committees are officially appointed committees, everybody, just look at this and see who answers to whom, um, and it, this is what it is. So I would like to ask, because we have to delete chapter 35 of the codebook, which is what this basically is, um, I'd like to ask that the board crew calling for a hearing to delete chapter 35 on December 10.
I'll second that, in discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And please take the time to look at this, everybody.
Well, I've got, I've got three questions for you.
Okay.
Well, actually, you answered one. You answered one of them, the other one was, uh, page eight to nine, eight to 10.
Yeah.
Um, affirmative action, equal opportunity, where it talks about discrimination, should we add in sexual orientation?
Um.
Because that's not here, but it is, it is a protected class.
Um, Will reviewed it and put it in the language that we're supposed to have for that.
So maybe I'll ask Will directly.
Yeah, I think he felt comfortable with what, what's your next point? I can also ask you.
The only other one was, uh, on page 17, I, emergency leave or inclement weather delays for critical staff. Uh, I agree with the bulk of the paragraph, I just don't think, it should not be critical staff only, because I have, on occasion, accepted public works home when we had, it was like 106 degrees, where it was a health hazard for them to be working on a site.
I don't think this contradicts that ability.
Well, the, the, the description says it's for critical workers at, only. The title, emergency leave or inclement weather delays for critical staff. So I, I was just going to say that we could just delete the critical.
This doesn't, this is the handbook for non-C S E A employees, so if.
I guess we'll just apply to Blue, it doesn't really matter.
You could tell Blue to do it.
Right, but he's salaried anyway, he doesn't get.
Right, Blue, Blue.
It's a ladder to him.
Yeah, I mean, that's your discretion as the mayor.
Okay, so.
What you're asking is not contradicted by this.
Okay.
Doesn't exceed your authority.
I just wanted to make sure that that's also still optional, it doesn't have it often.
But everybody, please do look, because Alberta worked so hard with Nancy, and I mean, this is the, the product of a lot of months, right, Katie?
Yes, ma'am.
Katie doing research, looking for things in past minutes, I mean, we really, I think, tried to do this very thoroughly and, and very comprehensive.
Do we need to adopt this tonight?
Uh, no, we're going to have a hearing, I move to ask further, what we have to do.
We generally don't have a hearing, a public hearing?
We need, Will says we have to have a public hearing to delete.
Oh, oh, for that public hearing, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that gives you all the opportunity to continue to look at this in case you find spots. Once we delete December 10, I'm hoping we will adopt this December 10.
Okay.
Okay? So I move for the hearing, and Ariana seconded. Can we vote?
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
And, oh, I wanted to point out, this, Alberta ran it back to back all the way through the safe paper, but when the actual handbook, it, it will be very nicely divided by sections.
So good.
Okay. May I take a minute to make a presentation to you, Jason?
Sure.
This is funny.
What is that?
In light, now, this is coming from the dissenter on the chicken law, but I found a book called Minnie Rose Lovegreen's Recipe for Raising Chickens, for you, dear.
This is for me, thank you very much. I'm not just going to give my landowner to let me raise chickens on the property.
I don't know.
That's awesome, thank you, Sally.
You're welcome.
The main thing is to keep them happy.
Right.
That's what that said, that's how I'm like the.
Anyway, I, I was back then, and I thought.
Well, thank you, I'm gonna, I'm, I'll study it in depth.
Okay.
All right, um, I got an email from Jamie Ullinbrock, uh, this is item 11.
Yep.
Um, asking if it would be all right, so if the village would name the park down by the park down by the community gardens after John Vet.
I agree with you. I thought it had already been done, because there is a plaque there dedicating it to it.
Yeah, and apparently they think that that's just one section of the bigger area. Is it John Vet Memorial, whatnot? So, but Jamie, actually, she answered that, didn't she? According to Blue, they don't have anything for the park.
According to Blue?
They don't have it.
There's no... It doesn't have a name. There is a marker on the side of the river.
So let's do it.
Well, here's the thing. I'm not opposed to naming after Mayor Vet,
I thought it would be...
But should we open it up to other suggestions?
Well, the only other suggestion I would have is that we could name it the Mayor's Plural Garden for Nutrition, because Mayor Vet supported it, Mayor Nyquist supported it, Mayor West supported it, and Mayor Dundan supported it. So if it is the idea that village mayors have supported this idea from its inception, I'd be happy to just call it the Mayor's Plural, not possessive Gardens for Nutrition, because that way, it seems to me that it... We don't get into the difficulty of naming opportunities, which I can remember from my years on the school board was very difficult, because you create divisiveness. So I'd be happy to do it that way. I'm not opposed...
Why don't we table this till the 12th and think about it? I mean, it's not like it's an earth-shattering decision to make, but we don't get to name things very often, you know?
Well, they're really asking for a sign.
They'd like to... They want to name John Vet Park, Mayor Vet Park, or whatever. However she phrased it.
But, yeah, she did. But I also think that it has enjoyed support from all the mayors from the inception of the idea, and so...
I like the idea of naming after someone other than mayors.
Something other than mayors?
Something other than mayors.
Huh? What do you think? You have a thought?
I don't know.
All right.
There are lots of things named after the Huguenots and stuff. Maybe we should name something after the Wunnacan. Medehtan's Park.
We have a school named for them, and we also have a dorm, so...
Anyway, I don't know.
How about we just call it the Ordinary Citizen Park?
People's Park. The People's Park, I like that one.
Actually, I love alliteration, so anything like that would get me.
I kind of like People's Park, actually. Well, let's table this till December, mull it over.
That's fine.
All right, pickleball. I move that we repair the pickleball courts.
I second.
Any discussion?
On favor, yes.
Aye.
Aye.
But we do need an estimate from Blue, I guess, on what it will cost. Lou met with Blue, and they only want one section of it, Jason. So I don't think it's going to cost a lot, but do you want to... Or should we just tell them that we want to do it?
We need to repair it.
Okay.
It's there, it's a public property.
Okay, let's do it.
All right, what about Russo's Deli?
That's a parking request. It's a request to the board to consider...
Two-hour parking.
Two-hour parking, but it's a bigger item than Russo's Deli. It's Russo's Deli recognizing that there is a problem, which they see immediate to themselves. But it's a bigger problem than two or four or six spaces around Russo's Deli.
But since Jason and I are meeting with this whole group of people, and the next meeting is the 18th, on the whole issue of parking, might it be preferred by the board that Jason and I will come up with a recommendation, perhaps, on how we're going to solve some of those...
I think that's the only rational way to do it.
And this will include...
I don't think we can do it as a piecemeal item. I think it's a bigger issue than that.
Yeah, but I'm not sure we don't want a meter all the way up Main Street.
That's a different... You know, that's a solution.
And that is a solution, but it also is expensive, because each meter costs $500.
And then there has to be monitors.
It's only expensive if there's...
And then there needs to be monitors.
And I don't know how you enforce two-hour parking if we just have a sign saying two-hour parking. So might we wait on this until Jason and I have a better handle?
I think so.
Okay.
And the last thing is stickers.
But maybe we should send... Maybe we should send them something just saying that...
Which will be at the meeting.
We have received...
She was at the first meeting, too.
Oh, okay. Well, I don't know. I was just thinking that we should acknowledge that we have received...
I did tell her that we got it.
I have a date for lunch there tomorrow morning.
Just tell them, yeah.
I mean, I go there often enough, too, yeah.
Okay.
All right, stickers.
Let her know.
Why are we talking about stickers?
So Julie Robbins sent Sally and I an email saying that how we thought about window decals for our retail shops, saying that something like, we are a bag-free village.
Well, twister, plastic bags.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we thought it was a neat... I thought it was a neat idea.
I thought it was a great idea. Sally's question to Julie was, do we... Who's going to pay for it, basically?
Yeah.
And...
It's a neat idea.
And should we approach, you know, the downtown businesses about paying for it? I think if we're going to do it...
Since it's our mall.
Since it's our law, and we're implementing it, if we want to do this, we should pay for it.
Who does it? Who designed it? Just ask them, do the P to Q.
Who designed it?